We got some evidence that this was probably noticed. Well, we're missing our attorney, huh? You have any idea where our attorney is?
You just stepped out.
Well.
There she is. We can start now.
I hope she comes in with an opinion.
Okay. The County Board of Supervisors' March 19th meeting notice and agenda was posted in the Government Center Building in two places, posted on the county website on March 12th, 2024, and was published in the Legal Newspaper the week of March 11th, published on March 14th. In addition, on Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, at 9:22 a.m., the county clerk distributed such copies of notice of meeting to supervisors and media via email or mail, and the notice of amended agenda was posted in the Government Center, the county website, and copies of such notice of meeting were distributed to the supervisors and media via email or mail on Friday, March 5th.
That complies with the open meetings law.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Brad Olson.
Here.
Doug Rowdy. He's up there. Is he muted clear?
You can't hear him. Turn his mic on.
Okay, Steve Wardal.
Here.
Brian Wood.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Ruck. Barbara McAfee. Jeremy Hall.
Here.
Kim O'Connell.
Here.
Amy Middleton.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Denise Lalié-Pray. Ruth Arcand.
Here.
D.J. Semenez.
Excuse.
And John Bonaprise.
Present.
And Doug, do we have you yet? Are you able to unmute yourself?
Well, we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, and endlessness, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Need a motion on.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to move on the agenda. Any questions about it? All in favor?
Aye.
All same sign. Uh, need a motion on the, uh, matters ordered for adoption or consent agenda. By Tracy.
I'll second.
Any, any questions or comments about them? All in favor?
Aye.
Over to you.
Right.
Um, public comment. Uh, we have.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have some public comment this evening, so whoever is going first can go ahead and stand up and state your name and your, where you're from.
Okay. And you're restricted. You're restricted to three minutes and then you will be, uh, held.
Are you ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
My name is Russ Hanson. I'm from up in Steve Wardal's area by Cushing, and I'm here to tell you just a short bit about something on your agenda later. The River Road Ramble that our Sterling-Urique and Lake Town Historical Society puts. This year will be the 19th of one of those, and it's San Cry Falls to Grantsburg along the oldest road in Polk County, the San Cry River Road. That was in the 1830s, '37, when they signed the treaty with the Indians to cut the white pines. The supplies came up the San Cry River, got as far as the falls and the six miles of rapids, so they got off on a road, which is called the River Road. It was the first state highway in the county. It was also replaced by another state highway, Highway 87, which is the current River Road. And we had, last year, we had 50 different stops along the way from Grantsburg to San Cry Falls. You're all invited to come out next, uh, the fourth Saturday of September and ramble.
Thank you. What else?
Yes, my name is Brad Beerson. I have the pleasure of serving as the Director of Polk County Tourism, and I am here to speak in support of Resolution 1424, which Russ has just, uh, introduced to you about the River Road Ramble. But I would like to, uh, just say one or two, uh, things about the Hanson family, which is Russ, his wife Margot, and his son Scott, who have dedicated their lives to, uh, encouraging tourism and helping to build it into a, uh, into a thriving, uh, economy-driven, uh, entity here in Polk County. And there are a lot of people here that want to speak on other subjects, so I don't want to take off a lot of their time, but I do want to point out that, uh, uh, both him and his family have been supporting, uh, this county in, in their volunteering effort for many, many years. And through this resolution that you'll have a chance to vote on, and I hope you will, uh, move it on and move it through, um, today, we can really let them know that they have, uh, they are appreciated by this county for all that they've done with the, not just the River Road Ramble, but with all the other tourism-related things that they do. So thank you for considering this today.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Diane Yocum, and I live, um, at 405 130th Street in Amory. And I sent, um, a packet to each one of you, uh, last month, but I also want to address the fact that, uh, in January, Alan Walker, former Chairman of the Republican Party, asked you to attend a summit in Eau Claire, Wisconsin regarding Refugee Resettlement Project. And then also in February, you were invited to the Ron Bransner, uh, seminar on taxation without representation. And the thing is, is that, uh, to my knowledge, that's the third time, my packet, that you have been contacted regarding this refugee resettlement. And I'm just going to highlight some of the facts that I pointed out, is President Biden has vowed to place 3,000 refugees in Wisconsin in the next two years, and most of them come from the Islamic ideology, and they do not assimilate with our Constitution or our culture. And then also, Whitewater, a thousand Somalis were dropped into Whitewater, and the sheriff and the chief of police and the, um, city manager have written Jill Biden asking for help, pleading for help, for assistance for a community that's overwhelmed. So the Eau Claire Administrator has authorized 75, uh, refugees to be brought into Eau Claire from the Somali and, um, the Middle East, and those 75 are allowed to migrate to a minimum of 100 miles radius. That means it includes us, and without any input from us. The thing that I'm asking you to do is pass a resolution to put a pause on the, um, acceptance of immigration of refugees into Polk County until we can determine the, the impact it's going to have on taxpayers. Because the, the nonprofits that are coming in will only pay for 90 days of the expenses for these people, and after that, it's up to us, the taxpayers, and that we don't have any say on whatsoever. So we're asking you to pass a moratorium. So there's three other counties that have passed a moratorium, Chippewa County, Barron County, Burnett County, I believe, and St. Croix County just passed resolutions to pause the, um, acceptance of refugees into the county until we can find out how much it's going to cost us. I have two resolutions that I've given to the clerk to pass out to you, and those were similar to the resolutions passed in St. Croix County just last week. So I'd like to have you reconsider, uh, reconsider passing that resolution, but putting this on the agenda for next month. I appreciate your time.
Anyone else?
Hi, everyone. My name is, uh, Jay Calhoun. I live in Luck. I'm candidate, I'm a candidate for the new Assembly District 75. I'm here to speak in favor of actions that would result in a pause to the refugee resettlement efforts by World Relief in this county and all other counties within a 100-mile radius of Eau Claire. Thank you for your attention and for your dedication to sorting this issue out. My main concern is that World Relief began this effort by breaking the law, skipping the step of receiving approval from elected officials and the public, basically attempting to smuggle refugees into the area. This is not only illegal, but immoral as well. They're doing this without regard for the citizens of Wisconsin or the refugees themselves. I find their efforts deeply disheartening, especially considering all the other much more urgent matters our society is facing. Many of our own Polk County residents are homeless, hungry, or in poor health. They should be our priority. If World Relief truly had concerns about the safety and integration process of these refugees, it seems their main concern would be making sure they follow the law and that the community would, at the very least, be well-informed and aware so they could be prepared to welcome the refugees. Unfortunately, World Relief did exactly the opposite. I've been to countless meetings from Eau Claire to Menominee and in St. Croix County. I've heard many lies spoken by representatives from World Relief and the Wisconsin Department of Refugee Resettlement. I've also heard those lies debunked in real time by concerned, informed citizens. I would urge you to research for yourselves any information World Relief offers up. I applaud the citizens who are here today. They are the ones who should have your ears. They are the ones who elected you to represent them. One other thing I'd like to add is that I have personal experience with the broken immigration system. My oldest daughter has been following the law, trying to get her fiance, a Canadian citizen, across the border from Canada for two and a half years, at the cost of over 200, of over $20,000 and counting. He's still in Canada. In fact, just this week, as part of the vetting process, he'll be required to fly halfway across Canada to have a physical examination by a certified doctor. This physical exam alone will cost them over $3,000. These refugees are given fully tax-fair-funded, practically instantaneous trips here, many of them without, with little or no vetting. Thank you. I'm grateful for the chance to present my perspective this evening.
My name is Rhonda Miller. I'm from Bone Lake Town. I'm going to read part of the resolution that Diane, um, Yocum has, uh, proposed for you guys to, to consider, uh, to pause the refugee resettlement. Whereas the Refugee Act of 1980, located at Title VI, Chapter II of the Immigration and Nationality Act, created the Federal Refugee Resettlement Program to provide for the effective resettlement of refugees. And whereas within the United States, the U.S. Department of State operates the U.S. Six Refugee Admissions Program, U.S.R.I.P., and the Office of Refugee Resettlement, O.R.R., which assists refugees with access to various services in coordination with the states. And whereas within Wisconsin, the Bureau of Refugee Programs, B.R.P., receives grants from the O.R.R. and funds local statewide organizations to provide critical services to refugees. And whereas voluntary agencies, referred to as bologs, in Wisconsin that contract with state and/or federal governments to assist refugees with resettlement include World Relief Wisconsin with locations in the Fox Valley and the Chippewa Valley. And whereas the nearest voluntary agency to Polk County, Wisconsin, is World Relief Chippewa Valley, which with an office located in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. Whereas the U.S. Department of State requires that refugees be resettled within 100, within 100 miles of a voluntary agency's physical office location. And whereas Polk County is located within 100 miles of World Relief Chippewa Valley. And whereas approximately 75 refugees are planned to be resettled in the Chippewa Valley by September 30th, 2024, and I have to say 20, I believe, believe the number is 22 already have been placed. Whereas the resettlement of refugees in the United States requires significant financial resources to ensure their successful integration into society, including but not limited to housing, healthcare, education, employment assistance, language training, and social services. And whereas the Polk County Board of Supervisors are concerned about refugees being resettled within Polk County without the necessary long-term funding sources to sustain their integration without reliance upon the taxpayers of the county. And whereas Polk County is already stretched to its levy capacity without the ability to adequately fund state-mandated programs. And whereas the Polk County Board of Supervisors are disappointed by the lack of transparency and communication by World Relief Chippewa Valley regarding the anticipated resettlement of refugees within 100 miles of Polk County. And whereas, as rep, as rep, is that done? No. As refugees may be resettled within 100 miles of World Relief Chippewa Valley, collaboration and consultation with local government units within 100 miles of that location is imperative in order to.
Thank you. Three minutes is up.
Thank you for your consideration of this resolution.
Hi, my name is Sherri Lewis. I, uh, live at, uh, 2465 40th Street, Cumberland. You can see my sweatshirt here. This is from my son, who is in the military. He served in Iraq and Afghanistan. So did my husband and my other son. I have three sons, and all of them served in the military, and they fought against a lot of the terrorism that we saw after 2/11. And now we are bringing people into this country without vetting them, and we are putting this on the taxpayers. We are not taking a look at, um, the responsibility that we are all going to have to take. I, I'm, I'm assuming that you all are, you know, have families, parents of children, maybe grandchildren. We're talking about what is going to happen if we allow these people in without taking in those considerations that have been mentioned before. I have friends who live in Texas and have heard of two stories of murders, one of a young woman who was down there on vacation and was murdered, and another one of a man who was murdered delivering, um, wood to, um, firewood to a client. We can hear about these stories all over the country. I have another friend who lives in Fargo, and there, four police, two of them were murdered, one was put in, um, intensive care, and the fourth one actually managed to shoot the, um, the, the man who was, um, trying to get into an event, and he had bombs, and his goal was to kill as many people as he could. These are things that we're not seeing if we do not vet these people. It is important to really take a look at this, and we all have something to risk and lose if we do not take into this, take all these things into consideration. So I thank you for your time, and I pray that you will, um, really weigh heavy on, on putting this resolution on hold until we have an opportunity to really take a bigger look at this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Sorry. Anyone else? And close the public comments. All right. Next, our resolutions. Action. Resolution 924 is on the table. We need a motion for it.
Motion to bring to the floor for debate?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. The discussion reference. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Did we skip six?
Probably.
No.
No, I didn't.
We did one.
We went by, we.
That was before public comment.
No, we didn't skip that. Did you have something about, we can go back if you, something that you wanted to.
Oh, no, I mean, it's, I missed it. I had questions about some of the stuff in the.
Uh.
Oh.
Well.
We can circle back or something, but.
It's already, somebody who voted in favor would have to move to reconsider.
Yeah.
Kim and I.
Question, there's four pages. You want to go? We'll be here for a second. You want to go through it all?
Well, I mean, I had specific, I had specific questions from people that they had answered. Before it got voted on. I don't know how I missed that.
That's why we have public hearings, so that we don't, otherwise, if you look at that, there's four pages that we went through.
No, I know.
All night, just about going through them all again. That's why we have public hearings for this.
Uh, uh.
I mean.
All right.
Point of order. Do you want to bring it back, or we don't talk about it?
You want to bring it back?
Absolutely not.
Not? No, okay. Resolution B.
A.
A. Only on for debate. Any debate? To that?
Resolution 1024.
You already, you already voted on.
924. 924.
You already voted on 924?
No, we haven't. I don't want to get into the floor for debate.
Open for debate, openly.
A motion to approve.
Second, motion to approve is made and seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Resolution. Uh, B. What, N24.
Motion to bring it to the floor for discussion.
Made to bring it to the floor for discussion and seconded that. Second made in discussion ref, and resolution, reference to Resolution 1024. Hearing none. Motion to approve. Need a motion, motion made to approve Resolution 1024. Second. And seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Sign. Resolution 1124, motion to bring it to the floor. Motion made to bring 1124 to the floor for discussion and second.
Second.
Second made, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion referenced to 1124? These are pretty, pretty common. Uh, to approve. Okay, and motion made to approve. Second and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And sign. Resolution 1224. Election of Well Standing Orders. Need a motion to bring it to the floor.
Make a motion to bring it to a floor and approve it.
Motion made to bring it to the floor and to approve it.
Second.
Second. Got a second on that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All same sign. And resolution. 1324 compensation. Motion to the floor for debate and approval. Motion made to bring it to the floor for debate and approval.
I'll second it.
Seconded.
I, I know that, um.
Yeah.
If, if you wanted, Mr. Wertham, to discuss how we got to the numbers that are recommended, or if somebody from the committee wants to, or you, unless.
So it's already been moved and seconded for approval, so I'm guessing we have to act on that?
Well, he said approval and debate, which was, it was a combination.
Come first and then approval. Well, hopefully.
So, so if nobody votes on it, it's not yet to the floor, but nobody called point of orders. I was just watching you guys to see what you would do. But I'm really proud.
Does Don have a statement on numbers here?
Well, I think it needs discussion.
Well, it's open for discussion. Did we vote on it? All in favor?
No.
Oh.
Cause he moved to approve and discuss, so.
All right, the motion is made to approve, I mean, to debate.
To bring it to the floor. That's what Johnny said.
Yeah, and to approve. But Don can present the numbers.
Can't even, well, point of order.
Well, we can't.
That's not correct.
Can't. Do both.
Right.
You need to bring it to the floor for.
For debate, okay. No, all right. Leave the second part out. Motion made to bring the, uh, Resolution 1324 to the floor for debate. In second.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're open for debate on that compensation. I hope Don will fill us in on it. The research, it's been done. Is that a.
Eric, if you could go to slide nine. Thank you for the opportunity to do this, by the way. It's time to set the, uh, wages for the three elected officers here, the clerk, uh, register of deeds and treasurer. Here's our process. First thing we did is we grabbed the pay data for the same positions across our, and set accountings, which you might remember are Barron, Burnett, Dunn, Pierce, and St. Croix. We had all of the information for 24, and we had the information for 25 for Burnett, Dunn, Pierce, and St. Croix. So we know what those counties are doing. Kind of like we know what the counties were doing with wages when we did the wage study. We did a second part here. We asked our, uh, our consultant at McGrath, hey, look at these three roles, and if we could put them on the grid, we can't. They're elected officials. But if we did do that, given the quality of work, how would you grade it out? And the consultant said grade P, and I'll explain what that means in a minute. So, so two, two chunks of information, wage data, and then where the position would fit in our county's wage structure. Okay, next slide. Here's what we learned. Right now, for 2024, Polk is in sort of the second half of the distribution. We've got St. Croix at 82 and change, 81 for Barron, so $10,000 difference in Polk. Dunn, Polk, and Pierce are all within a couple thousand dollars of each other for 2024, and Burnett kind of pulls up the rear at 60, almost 64. That's 24 data, what folks are getting paid right now. We're talking about 25, though. We know that St. Croix has boosted this wage from 82 to almost 97,000, 18% increase. We know that Dunn has done this. Dunn has done this, about 90 and a half from 72, 25% increase. Again, this is our question mark. What are we going to do ourselves? Pierce, 69 to 72, and Burnett, 64 and change to 65 and a bit. So a couple of these counties, we don't know anything about Barron yet, a couple of these counties have had pretty big increases. And a couple have said, our, our salaries are pretty much right, let's give a sort of typical cost of living increase. So we've got a decision to make. Whether our salary in 71 is about right, where we look at an increase in this range, right, or whether or no, we really need to recalibrate. So what we did is we went to that information from the wage consultant and said, let's look at what P tells us. But when we look at grade P in our own scale, the minimum is about 78, the midpoint's about 90,000 bucks. If we were to think, well, what about, I think this should actually be, you, one grade up, the minimum's 83.4, the midpoint is 96. So with this information, it's telling us, based on our own grid, that we need to recalibrate. We ought not to do what Pearson, Burnett have done. If we want those roles to get paid about what the folks in P that are regular. Next slide. A little bit of mind-bending here, and I apologize, but then the next thing we do is we have to figure out what the percentage increase is going to be, I'll explain why in a second, for the years from now through 28. So now we're talking about percentage increase, kind of the, if there were a COLA, cost of living, what it would be. So now we're talking about percentage increase, kind of the, if there were a COLA, cost of living, what it would be. We know that St. Croix is gonna be at three. We know that Dunn's gonna be at five. We know that Pierce is at four. We know that Burnett is three. So for your consideration and what went through general government, let's use that four number, that four percent, plug it in. And when we do that, and do that recalibration, here's what we come up with, next slide. Take that into account, for your consideration, what passed general government, was this eighty-six, seven, sixty-five, and ninety-five cent number, twenty-one percent increase for twenty-five. That's the recalibration, plus four percent on top of what they're making in twenty-four. And then we carry that four percent through twenty twenty-eight.
It's a four-year contract, Captain Dunn.
Well, they're elected officials, and we do it for four years, yes, sir.
You can look at it like a schedule, it's not a contract.
Well, yeah.
We're committed to it. Well, once you make a decision, and we do need one, soon, very soon, then this is enforced through twen, through twenty-eight, yeah.
Okay. Any more questions or discussion that you might have for Don, reference to the calculation?
It's recommended by general government. It's what's recommended.
So.
That's right.
If I can add a little context to that.
Go ahead.
We were, we went through, I asked if we wanted to just move it to the board neutrally, and we said, no, we wanted to move it with recommendation, but I know after conversation, after the fact, that at least two of us did not feel like, we felt neutral on it, not, so that's why we wanted to bring it here for discussion, but it came through, yes, with that vote from Gen Gov. Cause I guess, are we in discussion then?
Well, we sure are.
Hey, cause my question is, like, is twenty-one percent has already had reactions from people that said, how the heck are we raising three different salaries, twenty-one percent in one shot, and I understand the reasoning behind it here. And not saying that this is the goal I wanna get to, but I'm wondering if we should have the discussion, does it make sense to do that, or does it make sense to do something somewhere in the middle? Cause we've got internal conflict, I think, that had been mentioned, I don't know, Malia, if you had said something about, that was, I don't wanna put you in a spot, but you'd said something about how it would be received, or no?
Well, keep in mind, this is something that is outside of every year, all the employees get whatever raise or no raise, depending upon what circumstances are. This year, we did a wage study. So this year, there were some significant jumps in some, a few positions. These positions, if they would have been regular employees, would have also received that jump, and they didn't because you can't change the pay of an elected official midterm. So this is really the chance for the county board to then say, hey, the same benefit we gave to all employees through that wage study, or the employees that had a benefit, doesn't it make sense so that you can attract and retain quality elected officials to, who wanna keep coming back, to have that commensurate with that, with our wage study, which is sort of the logic behind it. I don't, I don't think, I think what you're gonna run into, cause then in a few years, you'll be doing this for the sheriff. And boy, oh, boy, I mean, at that point, you're gonna see some, some significant compression, where people that report up to the sheriff are gonna be earning more than what the sheriff makes. So in past years, for the sheriff, given the timeframe, we've had to jump huge in order to just keep up with that compression. So the same is true for these other elected officials. Um, and, and so I, I mean, it's a policy decision on where you wanna go, because this board is setting the salary for attracting and retaining quality elected officials.
I have a couple of questions on that. So, one is, do we have trouble retaining and attracting? That was one question. And then what is our biggest percent jump, jump for our staff with the new wage? Like, we got, we're, you know, we're talking pretty big numbers here, twenty-one, eighteen, twenty-four percent jumps. What's our biggest with this wage study? Our biggest jump?
It was twenty-four, I have to go back and check. But we had some.
And again, with.
That kind of increases, sorry, most.
Sorry, Don. Um, again, with this one, the last resolution where they did the compensation for the elected officials, sent it, when they adjusted their wage, their previous next three years, they got a two-point-seven. Where staff was getting a five or a five-point-seven each one of those years. So they fell further behind in that grid, which is this adjustment move forward. That's why we picked a four percent, which comes closer to a cost of living movement forward, with the intention that you wouldn't have another big jump in four years.
And when you ask the question about, are we having a hard time attracting and retaining? In the county clerk's office alone, you had Sharon Jorgensen run for the office, resigned before the end of her term to go to a different office, you had Lisa resign. Might be because they have to work with the county board the closest. Um, or it might be because it's, it's that difficult of a job.
Take the blame.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, but, but really, uh, you know, joking aside, yes, in, in that particular spot, we have had recently and repeatedly a hard time attracting and retaining. Um, for the other elected officials, no, but we've got people in there that are very tenured and very good at what they do. And again, you're gonna have compression, whether it's the register of deeds with their deputy registers of deeds, if they aren't able to make that correction every once in a while, because that four percent that is being suggested is just a recommendation. You know, there could be time during that time where regular staff don't get any increase because of the nature of the economy, or they get a, a larger increase because of the nature of the economy and the county's resources. So this is just a, the best guess, so that someone who takes out papers to run for that position would know what they would be expecting for their salary for the next four years.
That would have been nice to know, is like those positions that report up to there, like you said, cause you don't want positions that are reporting up to these folks making more than them. So that would have been good to see, like, those comparisons and things like that, cause we're kind of working within complete information. That's why we have all the questions about twenty-one percent increase.
Wasn't, weren't you at general government?
Yeah.
And did you ask that question?
No, but it wasn't presented there either.
Mr. Chair, can we, any other, do we have a comment from the chair of government?
Does he have one?
The chair of general government, you know, there was five people that debated this in general government, correct?
Well, we went over, yeah.
It was asked, I mean, it was asked if the motion had to be with the recommendation, and I made the motion, and I said, yes.
Yeah.
I, I wanted it to come right, that's general government's job, is to bring a recommendation to the county board on wages for the next term. For elected officials.
You did it?
Well, how does this play? I just, I, I'm just trying to get my head around the difference between an elected official coming in and knowing what they're getting paid, you know, they're signing up for the job, they're running for, I thought it was that, versus our staff that we're trying to retain. How, how does this big jump play with the people that we wanna keep? I mean, I know we don't probably know that in this room, but that's just something I think about, it's like, are we, um, are we being supportive of the staff that we really wanna keep? Versus elected officials knowing what they're getting when they walk in the door?
Well, you have to set, you have to set their salary. You can't not.
Yeah.
Um.
Don't we have to do that as far as the election?
Right off.
We gotta do it, sure.
We, we do our best with our staff to maintain, that's why we did the wage study, and our goal to maintain, maintain those wages, wages over the long term with what we can afford, um, for a cost of living or a merit increase, to maintain, I mean, that is our goal. In our staff and, and our workforce. How that plays out with the budgeting, some of those numbers are unknown, um, as it ties into, uh, sales tax that you estimate out and do all that stuff, but, and we watch the economy, we watch our neighboring counties to make sure that we're competitive in the market. Um, but it all factors in, um, that our recommendation is here with that four percent and how we try to maintain our staff.
So are you comfortable with the twenty, whatever, one percent and four percent ongoing?
Yes.
Parity and, and whatever fair amongst what we did already with the other wage of the rest of the staff, staff versus the elected official?
Yes.
Do you have a comment, Jim?
I was just gonna ask, do we have a new pay scale then? That's where that P comes?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so that's, that's how a new person comes in, that, there on that pay scale.
On that pay scale, graded on their years of experience.
Alright.
Anybody else have any comments?
Mine got answered.
You've had answers.
Pay for motion.
Okay, you wanna call a question?
No. Motion to approve.
I'll second. Motion made and seconded to approve. Resolution thirteen twenty-four. That's presented. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, we have motion approved. And we'll move on to. Turn around. Fourteen, fourteen, twenty, next page.
A motion to bring to the floor for P.
Motion made to bring the resolution to the floor, fourteen twenty-four, and in second. You all in favor for discussion? Aye.
Aye.
Motion. Uh, any discussion references? You wanna make comment on it, Steve?
You know, this River Road ramble just brings a ton of people to the area there. I mean, the roads are full of people. And I did it a couple of years myself, put non-demonstration of a circle sawmill. You know, it, it's real interesting to look at all the history. We got the Cushing Museum, you know, it's got a lot of stuff in it. Rest of his family had just done a great job, and I was approached by the, uh, the, uh, historical society to bring this resolution forward, so I just brought it, handed it in. I think they deserve credit for what they do.
Hey, we need a motion on the resolution if there's no more discussion. So move for presentation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve, all in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Uh, update our rules of order.
Wait, gee.
Right.
One more, fifteen, fifteen twenty-four.
It's in the amended agenda, you might be looking.
I'm looking at the wrong agenda here, I got fifteen twenty-four. Resolution fifteen twenty-four for the dispatcher. Need a motion to move it to the floor, please.
A motion to bring it to the floor for debate.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to bring it to the floor for discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, you wanna presentation on that from? We've got someone to discuss, talk about that particular motion? Thought, thought you might be around. Hi, Dean.
It was a unanimous vote to bring it to the floor, correct?
Yes.
Yes. It's just, it didn't go through a committee yet, so it needed a two-thirds majority, so I just wanted to make sure.
Go ahead, tell us what's going on.
So I'll start from the beginning on this. So this is a next gen nine-one-one system upgrade, so this is all new nine-one-one equipment. Um, what we're asking for is, last year, we budgeted two hundred thousand for dispatch councils, so just to start from the beginning here, um, so this is a big grant, so on this grant, we get almost four hundred thousand dollars that the state gives us, there's a twenty percent match, plus we had other add-ons, such as, we can do text to nine-one-one, there's another program where somebody calls nine-one-one, we send them a code, they hit it, we can see on her phone camera what's occurring at the scene. So it's all new computers, all new software, um, all the maintenance costs, or some of the maintenance costs, I should say, is all rolled into this, this big package. So originally, we covered, put in two hundred thousand for these dispatch councils, for all the computer equipment to sit in. Um, we were able to do an amended grant and got some of that covered. So with that, we were adding a fourth station, cause we have three in there now. Big event, there's no room for a fourth, like a supervisor position to look at it, and with doing this, we're asking to spend some of that two hundred thousand to move a wall in dispatch, and then move an office. Next slide. So this is just a quick blueprint of our office here. So you can see, here's dispatch center, it's kind of hard to see. Um, our councils are here, there's a bathroom, and then Jill Stoffel's office, they have a little kitchenette here, and then from here, we want to, next slide. Or just point out, so this is what it kind of looks like now in dispatch with the three councils, one here, here, and here, next slide. This is all the equipment that they gotta put on there, and we're actually adding another monitor to this. Plus, there's gonna be a wall of monitors, like our cameras, our security cameras, we're gonna be able to watch a little better. We have security cameras here, E R C and the justice center, next. With the new councils, we wanna put in four councils, with moving the wall allows us to be eight, ADA clients. So, so we had somebody that we hired that was in wheelchair, or one of our employees that got injured in wheelchair bound, they can now get in there to those work areas for dispatching. Right now, it's real hard with our councils, the way they're set up, for somebody in a wheelchair to get around in there. We have a center council wheel, we call it, where we have all their information on there, with that in there, it's real cramped. So what we wanna do is, we wanna move the wall where it is here now, move it over, pick out the bathroom, and then this will become a, a break room, or, yeah, a break room, there'll be a little kitchenette in there. There'll be little cabinets here for the dispatchers, that they can, each have their own stuff in there, move it around, it's more sanitary, so they're not sharing some of the, like, headsets and mice and some of the keyboards and stuff, so they have their own equipment as part of this. And with the other part of this project, we're gonna take Jill Stoffel's office and put it over in a closet, we're converting a closet into her office, so renovation of that. Side. Again, here's some pictures of it, there's a bathroom, Jill's office, kitchenette, next. They don't use the bathroom in dispatch, cause you can hear everything that goes on in there, so nobody wants to use it anyway, so it really doesn't. Next one. Again, we want people to spell it, and then move the wall, make that a kitchenette, that makes dispatch easier. Now, where this wall at is currently here, there's a subfloor, so all the wires are underneath the floor, we can pull up panels and get to access to it. We won't be able to do that over here, but the way we got it designed is it won't affect the, the councils now, so, next one. Right across the hall will be Jill's office, where we put her in that, so. Next one. That's the closet, next one. And again, that, over here, we're gonna divide this office in a little bit more and put her here, but again, it's to cover some of the construction costs of, but getting the new councils, this new net, nine-home and dispatch upgrade, next one. And next one. If that's it, any questions about it?
Want to have any questions? Do you have a cost assessment?
Uh, so right now, I, I got some bids in there, about a hundred and twenty thousand. Um, we're working with Parks and Buildings after we, I found out that we need to go out for RFP, talking with Rob Pope, we came up with a plan to do, cut some of the costs, staff is getting some of the work, and then we'll have to contract it out.
But there's no additional funds.
Right, we're not.
That you need to allocate. This isn't a budget amendment that actually adds any funding, it's just clarifying the project.
Yeah.
Well, it's like, it's very much needed to bring things up to, up to me.
Just basically asking those councils if we can just use that money for councils and construction costs.
If any of us had been, visited that area, it's kind of a conundrum right now.
Any more discussion, Tim?
Dunbaring wall, so that was a big thing we all.
Okay.
Much of us did a tour of it last.
The state.
Okay, we need, any more discussion reference to the question? Need a motion on the.
I'll make the motion.
Resolution.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve, resolution twenty, or fifteen twenty-four.
Was there a second, no, second?
And seconded, I did.
Oh, you did, okay.
Got it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Same side. Okay, let's move to our rule of order. We have to give the next board a recommendation of what we think the rules of order should be for their tenure.
I'll make a motion to bring to the floor.
Motion to bring rules of order to the floor for discussion and any changes. No, we don't have to bring this to the floor for
Right, there's no decision to be made for you today. This is just the culmination of all of the recommendations from the
Everybody's got a copy of them, I hope.
Yep, they're, they're in your packet.
Highlighted the changes with, they went through general government pretty executive committee in great detail. Do you have any questions on it? I don't know how to approach this. What, what we're going to do is just go through it. If you want to go line by line, go ahead.
Well, I, I don't think that's necessary unless, because it went through every single committee. So we've now incorporated all of the recommended, recommended changes from the six, including executive that looked at the whole thing.
Okay. Well, then this
The next seated board will make the decision on.
So what you want, what you want is a consensus of the county board to move it with
Right, this is just an update saying this is what
This is an update.
This is what you guys have collectively in your committees come up with, will be then presenting to the next board.
Okay.
That's how it drifted, is just
So everybody has already looked at these and apparently have vetted them or considered them, discussed them, and that everything.
Just to clarify, so we just took the Code of Ethics, and you just plunked it in within the body here. So everything that we talked about. Yeah, Sabana had sore fingers because she had to retype it all, but she did a really good job. So everything that we talked about the other day, that was that separate whole document has been embedded in her.
And then I did highlight your specific changes recommended from last fall. Those are highlighted in yellow. Just because the red indicates that it was added to this rules of order document. I wanted to make sure that it was separated. Those additional changes to the Code of Ethics are also incorporated in that as well, and they are highlighted in you.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I have a question? Well, then?
I have one.
This is what I had.
I just, I asked Malia earlier, so it'd be page thirty-seven, five of seventeen. Under fairness and consistency, that number three.
You're at what?
That, I'm on page thirty-seven.
Oh, thirty-seven.
Seventeen.
Or five of seventeen, whichever, whichever you look at that. Fairness, consistency, that number three, that we can go back a year. I think we have to have Malia look at that and maybe have to pull that.
Well, that won't be for here, though, because these are the recommendations.
The recommendations, but I mean, it, it should be noted that I don't think it's legal to have that in there.
Well, the question
Should we look at that, that way, I guess?
Okay.
I mean, is it legal to be in there, to go after somebody a year later?
Yeah, it's legal. Will it have any effect? That's a different question.
Okay.
No, it's just, it would be like a censure of, hey, you did something bad. This is just going to go to the next board. Whether it's practical is a different question than whether it's legal.
That was the thing that I just wanted. But I'll see if we can leave it in there.
Okay, anybody else? Then we'll just move it to the to the next board.
Yep, they'll take it up.
They'll take it up and was it what they would want to, if I were to say. Okay. The right agenda, which signs? We will go for compensation. I didn't understand. Confirmation of appointments, I have none. Confirmation of appointments by the county administrator at this time.
I have none at this point.
Yes, none. A chairman's report. The only thing that that I have to report is Don and I did an interview with extension in reference to the broadband and the expansion of it and what Polk County has done. They were interested in our progress for an article in, in the Wisconsin County Association monthly. And I appreciate Don's help, because it's pretty hard to try to follow what's going on. I mean, he's done a good job of that. And I think that we should, you know, follow through with, with our efforts in the past and give us some consideration. And I, we're, we're looking at a couple of different potential ways of of approaching that and see if we can keep it moving along as, as it's been somewhat in a just in a holding pattern, so to speak. Other than that, there wasn't much of anything going on. We did not have a meeting, as you probably recall. So the administrator, do you have a report?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Just a few things that's been going on. It seems like a while since we met. So uh, the end, the end of January, I met with Brad Bjerson from the tourist council. We had a great meeting, looking at new ideas and how that program's going to move forward. Sales tax was down in January, four-point-four percent, about thirteen thousand dollars. It rebounded in February to an increase of six percent, to forty-seven thousand dollars. So that was good, not having any snow. That made a big difference. A couple of our projects are kicking off right now. The CISA building roof gets going here in a couple of weeks after this next group of storms come in. That came under budget by a hundred-and-twelve thousand, so that's good news. Clam Falls, we got two bids for the Clam Falls project. The low bid was two-point-eight-eight million. The next bid was five-point-one-five million. So a big difference in those. So we got a pretty good project going there. Got the contract signed for that. That'll be moving forward shortly. Positions, new zoning administrator, started Logan Hacker on February fifth. We replaced the surveyor with Ed Flannam. He started on January twenty-ninth, so those are key positions in the E S division that started. Good news down at GAM, they had their first three people graduate from their C N A training program to bring on some C N As, which is very hard for Dana to recruit down there. Also, with the implications of the provider, Brevea, closing down in Eau Claire, which is affecting our Berta Three and C S D. We had offers out to speech therapist and a occupational therapist, which accepted. So mandated services will be covered now in-house. You know, some money on that stuff. The Polk County Emergency Management will be holding a group exercise with Dresser A M S and behavioral health in April down in Dresser. The bulletproof glass for the justice center, that we got our bid for that, that's a hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars. That'll start soon for protect the folks over there. And extension, you have a really good presentation in H H S on four-H. And to know that our, our, our four-H teams here in Polk County are state champions in the Dairy Quiz Bowl in both the, both sessions there. They'll go to nationals in Tennessee. So that's good news for us. They got a really solid program there and extension with four-H. And then the last thing I want to do is just thank all of you supervisors for your service in Polk County government. I know we have the elections coming up, and many of you are running. Some of you are contested, but I just want to thank you for your service and been a pleasure working with you. Thank you.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Can I, can I ask an update on the recycle center?
The recycling center was going to kick off this week, but due to the storms right now, they postponed digging until April first. They had a pre-con meeting this morning at eleven o'clock. So the first of April, look, they'll start digging in the ground on that one.
And also on our fair grandstand?
The fair grandstands right now, we met once with the fair society. Right now, Cedar Core has the, the location and the size and working with the city on the proper setbacks, because it can go in the same spot and what size that'll be. I'm just waiting on the draft drawings on that before we meet again with the fair society.
Does it kind of look like the same spot might work? It is.
Yes, that's where it's going to go.
Good. Any, I usually ask questions on that, so thanks for the update, Chair. Any supervisors have any part?
I'm kind of quiet. Okay. You ready? Oh. Okay.
Little fair report? Don covered everything?
No, not here. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.